Good evening. We'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council, held today. We're at 5:05 on Tuesday, August 5th, 2025. I'd like to turn some time over to our city clerk for roll call.
Mayor Watkins.
President.
Vice Mayor Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Dykens is excused this evening. Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmembers Daley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I would like to invite those who would like to participate. Our invocation to stand, which will be given tonight by Pastor Tony Henry of Kingman Azurine Church, and after which we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to pray for you. Heavenly Father, as we open the city council meeting, we thank you that we still live in a country where we can openly and publicly come before you in prayer. We thank you for your Holy Spirit that has gone before us, preparing the way, and is present with us now. We humbly ask you for clarity and wisdom, that your Holy Spirit would guide the discussions and the decisions, ensuring that the best interests of our communities are kept first and foremost. May there be compassion, civility, integrity, and love for one another in this meeting tonight as we work together in unity to strengthen our communities and neighborhoods that we live, work, and raise our families. We ask all of these things in the name of Jesus, thankful for all your many blessings in our lives. Amen. Thank you, Father.
I will lead this.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item number one, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. The council may not respond to speakers during the call to the public. The council may direct the city manager to study the matter or request that the matter be placed on a future agenda. Once again, we appreciate all of you being here. A number of you have comments on a later item, but as far as our call to the public, Ms. Penny Holden, would you like to come up?
Hi, Penny Holden, Kingman, Arizona. I'm here to address the issue about the golf courts and the architect for the golf course and stuff. I'm just trying to wonder where the money's coming from, of where we're going to pay this half a million dollars from. I mean, you've got people that's living here on a fixed income. You've put up your water sewer and trash, and they're living on fixed incomes. And now you're turning around and spending a half a million dollars on golf courts. It just doesn't look good to the citizens of this community that we have the money to do that, but we don't have the money to fix the water lines and stuff that are necessities. And I'm just wondering if any of you have read the new report about the water that just came out, that we don't have as much water as they thought we had and stuff, and we're continuing to rezone and rebuild and add homes. At some point, we've got to figure this out and stuff. But I'm up here to represent the people that are on fixed income and stuff, that don't have the money to keep paying the increased utilities, the increase of everything that's coming, and then have you guys turn around and you're going to throw a hundred, a half a million dollars into a golf course. If people want to play golf, then you pay the fees to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Penny. Audrey. Oh, is it Audrey? Okay, would you like to come forward? I'm sorry, your last name?
Hallbrich.
Hallbrich. Okay. Thank you, hon.
I might be a little late because I know the decision has been made to a certain degree about the Flying Fortress for the renaming of the road. But as I had talked to you about previously, Ken, possibly we could have some coming to minds about it. Name that which is below the 40, north of the 40, Flying Fortress, and that which is above, in the Rancho Santa Fe tract, keep that Rancho Santa Fe. Because in all of the documentation that many of the buyers of these homes have gotten, they either saw Rattlesnake Canyon, or they saw Rancho Santa Fe. Nothing to do with Flying Fortress. And to name an entire parkway that permeates into the Walupai Mountain District above and connects with Walupai Mountain Road, why would they call that Flying Fortress? So possibly a compromise in having part of it, Rattlesnake Canyon, or whatever you want to call it, or Rancho Santa Fe, which makes a lot of sense because there is a development called that, and it's named after the Santa Fe Railroad that once was there. And then Flying Fortress, that's fantastic, but put it below the 40, which serves the airport and that district. And the example of that is very clear. Even when you go to Phoenix or Scottsdale, you have Hayden Road turns into Scottsdale Road at some point. We have that here in town. Stockton Hill turns into Walupai Mountain Road at Route 66. So it's not something that has not been done before. So it would make sense, make the people happy that have the houses in Rancho Santa Fe and in Walupai area, and the people that want the Flying Fortress, that's fantastic. They can have it over by the airport. And that's all I have to say. Other than pave the road outside the development between Rancho Santa Fe, on Rancho Santa Fe, at Southern and Louise, outside of Sandstone, and then probably a lot of people would be happy. Find that money, defer your golf course stuff, and build that doggone road.
Thank you, Audrey. And once again, Penny and Audrey, thank you for your comments. We always, as a council, invite the public. That's why we have this time during our meetings. And it's, anyway, it's so important. Thank you. Item number two, noops, I'm sorry. Yep, we're good. Okay, item number two, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Right away, council, we need to pull item N for a future council meeting. There are some numbers that are off in that, so we're, number N has been pulled completely. So that does leave items A to P less N. Is there any of those items that need to be pulled for further discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item I.
Item I, okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, two M.
M?
Two F.
F, okay, two F. Okay. Anything else, councillors? Okay, can we have a motion then approving items A through P less N, and of course, F and I? And we will talk about F and I.
Some of.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So then, starting with item number F, Mr. Councillor Ward.
Please read, Mayor, could you please read?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'll read it, thank you. Authorization to transfer a retired police vehicle to KUSD for the Law and Public Safety Program. KUSD has requested the donation of a retired police unit to support hands-on learning within its Law and Public Safety Program. The proposed vehicle is a 2014 Ford Explorer with 135,051 miles, and an estimated resale value between $5,000 and $7,000. This unit has been replaced in the KPD fleet and is no longer in active service. To support the occasional use of the vehicle, basic uplifting, upfitting, and interior equipment, such as emergency lighting and prisoner partition, will remain in place. The police radio has been removed and will not be included in the transfer. City Code Section 2-351-H allows for the transfer of surplus property to another governmental entity. Staff recommends approval. Councillor Ward.
I pulled that just so that we could hear more information on it.
Chief, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council. I appreciate the opportunity to highlight this program. It's something that I'm very excited about and to be, and to be part of. Something that we've been working on with the school district for, let's say, close to two years. And now that we've been able to replace some of our aging fleet and get other vehicles in service, we have a vehicle identified, as stated, that will suit the needs of the program. I've invited the Career and Technical Education Director, Lindsay Woolsey, to attend here, as well as the instructor of the program, Don Dowdy. Don is the instructor of the Law and Public Safety Program with the school district, and they're currently housing that program at Lee Williams High School downtown. And we see this, I see this as something that helps us with bridging that gap from high school to 21, getting people interested in law enforcement. They also be interested in fire service, any public safety-related items. So if it was okay with the council, I've asked that Director Woolsey and Don Dowdy maybe just share the highlights of the program.
Mayor Watkins, Vice Mayor Samley, members of the council. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you for a few minutes about this endeavor. My name is Don Dowdy, as Chief Cooper mentioned, and I am the teacher for the Law and Public Safety Program at Lee Williams High School. With me today is our CTE Director, Lindsay Woolsey. I also have a local vendor that's been involved in outfitting some of the City of Kingman Fire Department and Police Department vehicles of late, who has agreed to volunteer time, supplies for any needs. If there's anything that needs to be removed, any additions to the vehicle. I have Justin Flummer with me. Some of you may recognize him from his other job with a neighboring city. But he's present today, as well as I have several students from my program. They're quite excited and here, should you have any questions that we'd like to ask them. The Law and Public Safety Class at Lee Williams is in its fifth year. We currently have about 105 students enrolled in three sections of the program. We have two Year One Beginner classes, a Year Two Advanced class, and this year we're piloting a Year Three, even more advanced, class. And I'll talk about that here in just a moment until we design that. As Chief Cooper mentioned, about two years ago, after I took over the program and kind of got my feet wet, I saw the value of having a vehicle with our program. The primary reason would be for some training opportunities for our students, such as we practice traffic stops, vehicle searches, accident investigation, building searches. And we've also just recently, we have quite a robust fire program at our school, and the fire instructor and I recently have aligned our schedules. And with our new block schedule, it's going to allow us the opportunity to have upwards of two hours of training once or twice a month together. And the addition of this vehicle to do that would be just an awesome benefit for us. The secondary use for this vehicle could be to help out with some school events, some community events. We at times go to other middle schools for an eighth grade showcase and other things, and the vehicle would be able to participate in that, as well as hopefully maybe some parades and other events that occur around town. I mentioned the Year Three program. This is currently something new for us. We're working hard on introducing some work-based learning through apprenticeship, internship, volunteer opportunities. Right now, we're collaborating with the City of Kingman 911 Center. And I have recently become certified to teach a National 911 Telecommunicator Course. So our Year Three students are going to have the ability to graduate high school with a National 911 certification. So all of this kind of leads into where our program is. Our program is growing and continuing to grow. We're really looking to build with other local organizations, just build some relationships. And it's kind of funny as I walk in here because I actually began my career downstairs in this building 45 years ago, when it housed the Police Department. As a high school student, between my junior and senior year, I was hired with the Police Department. And I spent my senior year as a graveyard dispatcher, looking to basically take those opportunities and bring them to current. Our program right now, out of those 105 students, we have a handful that are interested in a career in law enforcement, or just in the criminal justice field, such as crime scene investigations, forensics, 911 dispatch, local law enforcement, county, state, federal agencies, security, detention, corrections. That's a lot of what our program is truly about. So in closing, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to come up, speak to you just a little bit, let you know about the program and what we have going on over at our school. Also, thanks for the opportunity to further develop our program into which I'm sure is going to be one that's going to be producing some local first responders in the years to come. So turn it over to Ms. Woolsey.
Yes, thank you again for your support and welcoming us this evening to talk about the Law and Public Safety Program. And we just really appreciate our partnership with the City of Kingman. We meet with police officers and fire personnel pretty regularly, and everyone has been so supportive of these programs. I wanted to share a little bit about some of the other Career and Technical Education programs that are available on our high school campuses, just so that you're aware. Because these community partnerships are so important, and we are always looking for people to contribute, support, maybe offer job shadowing, internships, guest speakers, those kinds of things. So here are some of the programs that I wanted to highlight. We have business management, digital communications, education professions, graphic design, nursing services, sports medicine, stagecraft, automotive technologies, fire service, law and public safety, agri-science, cabinet making, culinary, early childhood education, and welding. And WAVE plays a big part in supporting these programs on the high school campus and also giving the opportunity to our high school students to take college courses at Mahavi College. So they do, students do need to fill out an application to participate in WAVE, but they can take those classes at no cost to them, and their textbooks are also paid for. So as you can see, it takes a lot of partnership to bring these programs to our students, and we just appreciate you hearing this out tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Dowdy, Ms. Woolsey, thank you very much for coming and sharing your thoughts with council today, tonight. What a great program. We appreciate you working with our youth. And these future first responders that you mentioned, what a great idea. So once again, we appreciate it. I am a proud father of a first responder, actually a couple of first responders, so. And we have a family friend that just graduated from KUSD's Fire Science Program. So amazing program. Thanks again. Council, any questions for Chief, or Mr. Dowdy, or Ms. Lindsay?
I do have one.
Yes.
Is this program only offered at Lee Williams, or is it for all of the high schools, both high schools?
So with our recent change with block schedule, one of the beautiful things about this is both this year and in the years to come, our electives are now, instead of being 58 minutes, we've gone closer to a two-hour block. So students from each school are now able to sign up for and go to the other schools for the electives. So a student at Lee Williams, if they were interested in taking a culinary class at Kingman High School, would have the ability to go out to Kingman High School, take the culinary program two days a week, and then come back to Lee as a Lee student. I don't know what else you might want to add to that, but.
And vice versa.
Right.
So there's an application students can fill out, it's called the cross-campus application. And so if there's a program offered at another campus that isn't available at their home school, then they can apply to be in that program.
That's awesome. Thank you. Thank you, councillor. Council, any other questions? Councillor Ward.
Just a comment. I pulled this not because of the cost, but because I wanted more information, and I wanted the public to understand where the car is going and what it's for, and that it's a good cost.
Councillor Ward, we appreciate that. I appreciate you pulling that. I think we've all been more enlightened tonight. So that being, would you like to make a motion then approving item I?
I will.
Item F, Authorization to Transfer Retired Police Vehicle.
I will make a motion to approve item 2F.
Okay, do we have, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks again. Okay, Vice Mayor, moving on to item I, Authorization to Hire a Golf Course Architect to Complete a Golf Course Master Plan. At the June 9th, 2025 Meeting of the City of Kingman Parks and Recreation Department's Golf Commission, the commission voted six to one to recommend to the mayor and the city council to move forward with the golf division's request to procure a golf course architect to complete a golf course master plan. The golf commission recommended approval of six to one.
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled this item because I did go to the commission meeting, and the presentation that they were privy to, I didn't feel it was compelling to spend monies out of the general fund to subsidize this. So I had a couple of questions, and I'm not sure Manager Walsh, who you want to call up.
Thank you, Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor. I have Mike Mirsman here, he's the Parks Director. He can help answer those questions, and if not, we'll pick on Tina as well.
Okay, great. Good evening.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I just had a question in the backup and looking through the budget that we approved. I wasn't sure that I was able to find where this had been a budgeted item, or whether it was in the CIP.
It wasn't a budgeted item. It's something we thought we could take out of contingency possibly. And we were given direction to work with the Golf Commission and try to get direction of where our golf course was going to go to the future. You know, areas of turf that we'll put back to desert to conserve water and things like that. And where it won't be us making the decisions, it will be an architect that does that for a living. So it wouldn't be a director of parks making those decisions, or a golf course superintendent, or a commission member. It would be somebody that's trained in doing that kind of stuff. So that's kind of what our hope was.
All right. And in the backup, it showed that these types of reports could be anywhere from $35,000 to $50,000?
Yes, that's depending on what all level of service you want from them. That would be if you want to implement, the higher number would be if you want to implement that whole plan immediately and start working on all those projects and have their guidance designing greens or designing stuff. It would be more. So that's kind of what the basics would be. A planned direction for us going forward would be the lower end of that.
Okay. And then it's my understanding that we had, we paid for an irrigation report on the golf course earlier this year, as well as a course evaluation?
Yes.
Can you tell me what the cost of those two individual reports were? Or combined, if you want to combine them?
Yeah, I think it was $7,000 for the, for the course consultant, and $4,000 for the irrigation consultant. And we got good, really good reports from both of those. And we're working on the list of the course consultants. We're following along with his recommendations. And obviously, the irrigation consultant gave us some very high numbers of what it would take to redo our irrigation system, which is much needed. I mean, it's, I laugh about it because I talk about the new irrigation. Our new irrigation was stuff that was done in the 90s, early 90s. And that's old and outdated by now, too. But the irrigation consultant, when he came, our old interior holes are very, very old, so. And we have a lot of mainline leaks and things like that, so it's much needed, obviously.
Okay. Well, I mean, although I do appreciate, I know we're pretty heavy on, I didn't total up all the projects that we approved in the budget that we just approved with all the CIP that's in there for the golf course. So I know we do have an item in our consent for the golf carts. So I want to, you know, I just, in my opinion, I would rather see a marketing plan. And I know that I had brought this up during the budget discussions in May. So I would rather see something like that. We need to get that golf course making money, and I would rather see that. I don't see any reason to not postpone this to the next fiscal year budget. So I can't support this item, and I'm going to make a recommendation that we deny it and push it out. Those are my comments.
Okay. Also, Mike, a couple of questions. In our discussion, actually, I was talking with the Vice Mayor yesterday. Our golf pro is, has been hired, or it's, we're waiting for him to come on board?
He starts Monday.
Okay. When would something like this, I mean, obviously, we want to make sure he's included in this discussion, would be one factor. So, and of course, get his, get his feet wet. That could take anywhere between 30 to, what, 90, even more, to have a good idea of what's going on with the golf course. So that's one concern I have, too. I'm glad that we have hired a golf pro, and I know, I had heard, too, that he's supposed to start very soon. So that's great. I think it's really my main concern. How long would this take, how long would it take us to find an architect to be, or do you have someone in mind already?
Well, there's, we could do an RFP for one if we wanted to, or there's, you could pick one by looking at qualifications that they have. And I reached out to two different ones just for this information.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that.
And they're going to, if you want a Jack Nicklaus design firm, it's going to be a lot more than the numbers I gave you.
Yes.
If you want young up-and-comers, then it's a little less. And I don't think ours is that complicated, to be quite honest with you. I mean, you know, our golf course is what it is. There's not a lot of room to expand, to make a whole lot more stuff in my mind. So, but I think there are some key things that we do need, like back-to-desert areas where we can conserve water and things like that are very important.
You know, I always love coming up from downtown and getting on the freeway and driving by our golf, our golf course. It's sort of one of the shining gems of our city. So I appreciate that. And actually, it's sad because of the road construction. They're going to put a wall up, and we're not going to be able to see it anymore, for the most part. But, and I, we appreciate what you and your staff do. We are concerned, though, as a council, of course, with funds and public funds and how they're spent. So that's why, I appreciate all the questions. Council, more, Councillor Savage?
Yeah, I like the idea of this. I think the timing's quite a bit off on that. But one thing I would like to see is a cost estimate. You know, it's one thing to say, you should do this, you should do that, you should do that. But what's it going to cost us? That's the bottom line we need to look at as well. Well, that's what I got to add.
And those would be numbers that you would get from the architect, too.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? Smiley? No? Okay, councillor.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I think, for me, my priority is seeing the revenues increase at the golf course first, before we talk about taking on a new design, expanded design, making these kinds of investments. I'd like to see the grill make a profit. I don't understand why it doesn't. Cherish mentioned a marketing plan. I think that's really important to increasing those revenues. And then getting those revenues up so they can pay for these improvements, instead of taking it out of the general fund or taking it from other parks. We want to see, you know, the golf course improve, but it should be able to pay for those improvements, I think. So that's my priority.
And I'd like to say one thing, too. Everybody talks about the golf course and not making money and everything, but the golf course is the closest thing in our department to being self-supporting percentage-wise. With the revenue we take in, it's, you know, and I'm not picking battles of any of them, but it is the closest thing we have percentage-wise to paying for itself.
I, and I do appreciate that, but I think there's opportunity for it to still increase those revenues.
And I agree. And as I mentioned before, and one of the main reasons it's not, because the council has been supportive of, in a long time, we didn't get new equipment, and we've been investing money into the golf course lately. So I think that's another reason why it's gotten a little farther apart, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Ward?
Yeah, Mike, with the, just a comment. With the amount of money that we budgeted for that golf course this year, it's, it looks like we'll come out in worse shape than we were last year. I hope not. But I can't support this.
Okay. Thank you, councillor. Yes, Councillor Walker?
Mike, with this evaluation we had earlier in the year, have we worked on everything that they've talked about in that? Where are we with that?
We're working on, and we, our golf course superintendent puts in his reports what all we're doing in regards to that. And he's giving weekly reports to the Golf Commission on where we're at with all those things that we're working on.
Okay.
And so we are working diligently on all the things that he brought up to us, so.
So maybe we should be, just work, focus on that until we get that done, and maybe revisit this, or, I don't know.
I think so. I think so. I think that's sort of the feelings of the council, that we probably want to revisit, is bring this back at a later date. So, and I do want to mention, we appreciate our. So, and I do want to mention, we appreciate our golf, our golf commission and their thoughts on trying to move forward with this. I mean, I don't want, just because they wanted to prove, they would like us to approve it too. But sometimes we have, you know, larger questions, bigger picture things that we need to consider. So, thank you, Mike.
I'm sure they'll understand.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, would you like to make a motion then of however you want to make that motion?
I would like to make a motion to deny item I, but encourage you to put it in your budget for next year.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, moving on, item three, action items, three A, consideration to rename Andy Devine Avenue to Route sixty-six. The community has expressed interest in renaming Andy Devine Avenue to Route sixty-six to commemorate the upcoming Route sixty-six centennial in two thousand twenty-six. Staff emphasized that enhancing wayfinding along the historic route should be a priority to better guide visitors during their trips to Kingman. The Heritage Preservation Commission heard this item on May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five. The commission made a motion to move forward with renaming Andy Devine Avenue to Route sixty-six and passed by a vote of four to two. Counsel discretion. Josh, welcome.
Erin, thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I am here to present a proposal to look at renaming or returning the name Route sixty-six to what we call Andy Devine Avenue in Kingman, Arizona. As you know, Route sixty-six will turn one hundred November eleventh of, went away from, there we go, of two thousand twenty-six. And we have an opportunity to reconnect Kingman with the broader communities along Route six and all eight states. Returning it to America's Main Street. Now this, I do have a lot of slides, but I'm going to try to go through them fast. So I'm going to be comprehensive but concise at the same time, if that's possible. So just trying to give a complete history and current situation now so that everyone kind of has a good background before we go into making, or before you make any decisions. Route sixty-six in Kingman was initially North Front Street because it followed the north side of the frontage of the railroad in Kingman. Topeka was South Front Street, not very creative, but that's what we had. When you got outside of the downtown area, it was just US Highway sixty-six. So here is a map of Kingman in nineteen forty-seven, it's a very interesting map to study. You can see downtown, we have North Front Street and then as you go up the hill, it is US Highway sixty-six. Now, Kingman had an opportunity to really have a bit of a publicity stunt. Andy Devine was a well-known character actor who spent much of his childhood in Kingman. And we wanted to use the opportunity to rename Front Street into something more exciting, Andy Devine Avenue. So we had a, this episode of This Is Your Life nineteen fifty-five where it was announced that Front Street would be recalled Andy Devine Avenue and Flagstaff also got on the bandwagon, that's where Andy Devine was born. They decided to erect signs at the highways going in and out of town to birthplace of Andy Devine. The signs are long since gone, but we're, we're still stuck with the name. Now, the new Andy Devine Avenue applied only to downtown, it was only where it was called Front Street. So where you went beyond downtown, it was still just US Highway sixty-six. A lot of the businesses had the unique conundrum of trying to market where their location was. So I'll show some examples of that. This is a nineteen sixty map, so soon after Andy Devine was called out. And there you can see it downtown. And then as you go up the hill, it is US Highway sixty-six and ninety-three, which were concurrent highways in Kingman at that time. This is a nineteen sixty-one Yellow Pages and you'll see that the restaurant is highlighting their address on Andy Devine Avenue, but also we're on Highway sixty-six and ninety-three. That's two, that's wayfinding for the visitors coming in, that they can identify where those are located because they're not maybe familiar with Andy Devine, but they're definitely familiar with the inner, with the highways coming through. Again, another restaurant. Now, of course, Route sixty-six had a bit of a resurgence in the late nineteen eighties. It was bypassed and decommissioned in nineteen eighty-five. Particularly in Arizona, between business owners in Kingman and Seligman, they got together, they recognized there was a nostalgia of Route sixty-six and they wanted to capitalize on that once again, you know, bringing people in, because by nineteen ninety, all eight states had an association. There was really a national movement, a lot of interest. And Kingman had the unique opportunity of being situated at the longest remaining stretch of Route sixty-six. So for a long time, our identity was as Mojave County. Really, Kingman was the heart and soul of Mojave County. We had the Mojave County Union High School, the Mojave County Chamber of Commerce, Mojave County Historical Society, Mojave Minor, Daily Minor. So really, the thousand lies ashore, or thousand miles of shoreline of Mojave County was part of our identity. Over time, Kingman had its own unique identity. The shoreline represents the river cities, but Kingman was something different, we're the heart of Historic Route sixty-six. This is an article from June nineteen ninety-three where the Tourism Development, Tourism and Economic Development Commission decided that they wanted to put Kingman's new motto on the tanks. And that's what they did, that's still the motto that we have, very recognizable Route sixty-six landmark all over the world for Route sixty-six enthusiasts. And Kingman took that motto and we made it ourselves. So a couple of these pieces, some of you may remember, our area code used to be six oh two and then five two oh. Couple of these pieces are from nineteen ninety-three, ninety-four before, we had the nine two eight zip code. And then we've got one that's a nine two eight zip code. So this is the marking that we were doing, it didn't say hometown of Andy Devine, it said heart of Historic Route sixty-six. Why we didn't address this thirty years ago, I don't know, but here we are. So Route sixty-six in Kingman, as the community grew, as more of this, this road was under the jurisdiction of the city, it changed its name to Andy Devine. So by now, all of what we call Andy Devine, from Castle Rock to Grandview, is called Andy Devine, not Route sixty-six. The only part through town that is Route sixty-six is this part leaving town. So you have visitors coming in, they want a Route sixty-six experience, they don't really know they're on it. All they know is when they leave town, they're on Route sixty-six, in town, they're not, they have a hard time finding it. So we did have a Route sixty-six consortium summit in Albuquerque earlier this year where we discussed how all eight states were going to work together. We had members of the associations of all these states, the tourism offices of all eight states, and really tried to figure out, how can we collaborate in promoting Route sixty-six for this unique centennial occasion? Well, we also talked about pinch points and one of the main being the wayfinding on sixty-six. It's not intuitive, it can be confusing for international travelers who don't understand or know our signage system very well. For online mapping opportunities, it's very hard to find Route sixty-six in Kingman and other communities where they've changed the name locally. And then smaller communities where you have businesses on sixty-six and people are trying to explore and find it, they miss on that economic opportunity because people are not finding the businesses that are on sixty-six because they can't find sixty-six. So, for example, what happens when you search for the visitor center, which is at one twenty west Andy Devine Avenue? If you type in one twenty west Route sixty-six, it will take you out into the country because it's not in Kingman. Now, I will say, if you go onto a desktop and you pull up Google Maps, you'll find Andy Devine will also say Historic RTE sixty-six. So if you, if you go into Google Maps and you type in one twenty west Historic RTE sixty-six, Kingman, Arizona, it'll land you to us at our visitor center. But if you try to do that one twenty west Historic Route sixty-six, one twenty west Route sixty-six, it doesn't happen because it's not lined up, that's not the name of the road. Now, there has been an ongoing local effort to update that, to bring us back to the history that we've had since nineteen twenty-six. And this was led by the Kingman Route sixty-six Association and the late Stockton. I forty signage at Shinnerymp looked like a really easy starting point because you didn't have a lot of businesses that were impacted, it was just changing out, you know, the signs at that one interchange. So he lobbied with the county supervisors at the time and they agreed. This is a, an excerpt from a letter in twenty eighteen that they wrote to ADOT. "The Board Finds This Action Consistent With Motorist and Visitor Recognition Of Route Sixty-Six As A Destination and Attraction Of International Significance." So they worked with ADOT and this is what we have. You'll see below is the, what was there before and now there's Historic sixty-six. And I will say, working in the visitor center, having visitors coming in, they got off on this exit because it said it was sixty-six, they see the little sign at the bottom there and when they try to go the Oatman Way, it's not sixty-six, so they come into Kingman, they're, they're lost. How, how's it we get to Topak, how's it we get to Oatman because we cannot find the road? We don't have that problem anymore, people now know how to get to Route sixty-six. Even though that little sign's there, people thought, well, this is going to get me to Route sixty-six. They didn't realize Shinnerymp was Route sixty-six. This is the signage that was changed out, it's on both sides of the intersection at Shinnerymp. And then here we are at Andy Devine. So you see, there's the sixty-six signs on there, well, it's just like the airport. You know, you're not going to come to the end of the off-ramp and land at the airport, you know, this is going to get you to the airport. A lot of people, they get off, they think this is going to take them to Route sixty-six. They followed in Andy Devine, they get five miles down to the visitor center and they say, I can't find it, where is Route sixty-six? It's supposed to be off here, I cannot find it. So we've had commissions look at this, as you, Mayor, highlighted in the, the topic, that Heritage Preservation Commission did vote that they would be in favor of changing the name. The Economic Development Advisory Commission also met in June and discussed the topic. They wanted to bring it back for an action item, it was just a discussion item at the time, but they thought it was really important to actually discuss and maybe take action on. One commissioner said, and this is one who just recently moved to Kingman, I was on Andy Devine when I came here and I'm like, where is Route sixty-six? The whole time I'm on it and I didn't realize it, and that's exactly what we're finding with our visitors. If you're, if you're from Kingman, you know Andy Devine's Route sixty-six. Just like we had a call to the public member was talking about how Stockton Hill changes to Walpamp Mountain Road at Route sixty-six. Well, it's Andy Devine, but we know that, visitors, they don't know that. So the business take, we did reach out to several businesses, I don't have all the contacts of everybody, but about forty. I didn't have a whole lot returned, but I want to include that in here because they did take the time to respond. Thirteen businesses responded, six were in favor of just outright changing it, two really wanted to see both, if that was possible, but they had a preference of sixty-six if not. Three wanted to keep it status quo and two really needed more information before commenting. Again, not a large sample set, but it's just some information, I'm sure it would grow similar if we had more people to talk about it. And of course, there would be business costs and I think all the businesses that responded to us understood, you know, there's going to be a short-term cost element to it, but the dividends of marketing that they're on Route sixty-six would be a much bigger economic benefit in the outcome. And this is kind of a side note, and I'm not going to go through all of the history on it because I've been told to try to keep my presentation to a minimum. But there is one piece of Route sixty, of Andy Devine Avenue that was never Route sixty-six. It's that little segment in front of the Mothium Museum of History and Arts. That really was a junction between sixty-six and ninety-three. Over the years, it changed how it was, but really, by, by around nineteen eighty, it was realigned and it became what is part of Andy Devine. Of course, the locals didn't really recognize it that way because they all knew that that wasn't part of sixty-six. So the museum actually held fundraisers where they'd auction off the name of the sign. Every year, they'd change out the sign with whoever won that auction and that's the name of it. So if you go to Apple Maps right now and you pull it up, this fossil name still will come up in Apple Maps, Ella's place because that's the last name that it had. This would, could stay Andy Devine Avenue, it would be right in front of the museum, which is the home of the Andy Devine artifacts collection, the exhibit. We don't have to, we don't have to erase history here. You know, when, when you have an old building, it was built in nineteen twenty-six and they put a new facade on it in fifty-five and you bring it back to twenty-six and you bring it back to what it was originally, you're not erasing history, you're, you're bringing it back. Here, we can do both, here you can rename Andy Devine Avenue Route sixty-six, but still keep Andy Devine Avenue and keep that history, we still have the rodeo, still have the Andy Devine Days Parade, you still have Andy Awards, you have all the history, the rich, you know, literature and everything. So none of that is gone, all that's still there. So there is a cost, obviously, there is a cost. We know within the city, it'd be about twenty-seven hundred dollars for us to change out the signs. When ADOT worked on that other Shinnerymp exit, they said it was about an eighty thousand dollar project. They put in some, the county put in some, private individuals put in some. So with this one, they, I didn't have the cost by the time I put the presentation together, but they said it'd be sixty thousand plus to do this sort of job. So, yes, there is that, but I also want to talk about the economic impact of Route sixty-six and what we could see from it. So the Route sixty-six Association of Arizona did commission a Route sixty-six traveler impact in all of Arizona. And so Kingman's part of this and I'll, later on, we'll break it down what part of it. But two point three million visitors in twenty twenty-three, over a billion dollars in spending, two hundred and seventy-three million in earnings, that's a lot of money in our pockets, ninety-nine million in taxes from these visitors coming in. You see, Kingman is a twenty percent of that chunk, but I really want to go into here and show Kingman as the list. So you can see the change of that spending from twenty nineteen going to twenty twenty-three. Look at the top one there on the bottom chart, eight point one percent increase in spending in Kingman. We are outpacing all the other communities and why is that? Well, let's look. So we, we track in our guestbook at the visitor center, where are people coming in from, why are they coming in? And when they let us know why they're coming in, they can write their own thing, but we also ask, you know, is it Las Vegas? Is it Kingman, is it Route sixty-six? And Route sixty-six accounts for more than half. And it doesn't just account for more than half, look at twenty twenty-one, fifty-one percent. Thirty-one hundred people signed in and checked that off, this is voluntary, they're, they're just letting us know. Twenty twenty-four, seventy-two hundred, over seventy-two hundred people, fifty-nine percent. Every year, it's going up, fifty-one, fifty-three, fifty-five, fifty-nine. The last year, now that's year-to-date, we are in the middle of the, the most highest interest Route sixty-six travel season is the third quarter, July through September. Couple of months, we're going to see that number pop up, it might be higher than fifty-nine percent. Why is it? Twenty twenty-one, we put the drive-through shield in, we've done the downtown renovation, we put the heart sign in, we put the leaning shield in, the Route sixty-six centennial is coming up. We're making investments that make people want to come here to experience what Route sixty-six is about. Economic development plans, so this is, as you know, twenty eighteen, we, we completed an economic development plan. We're in the middle of updating that right now, so this isn't even published yet, this is just preliminary what we're looking at. And you can see that from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-four, thirty-one percent increase in tourism-generated revenues and spending in this town. And where are the key takeaways? Route sixty-six branding. This is, this is really our ticket to be the best thing, to have that world recognition of what Route sixty-six is and is to Kingman. So I, I want to go over the process and to be, to be honest, if council decides to move forward with this, it doesn't mean the name is changing. It just means we're looking at the feasibility and we're looking at what the public wants to say and wants to see. So if council directs, we would just start the application renaming process. And then there's a group of city departments and our partners that it would go through, they'd review and they'd see what would that look like? And then if council wanted to have that hearing, all the biz, all the property owners within a hundred and fifty feet of Andy Devine would get a letter letting them know, and that sounds like a lot, but it's really not. I went and pulled up the GIS and there were, I counted a hundred and sixty-three, but I know I overcounted some because there's a lot of properties that are owned by the same people. So it'd be probably a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five dollars to put those letters out, mail them out to all the people so that they would know about this on the table and they'd have the opportunity to come in at that public hearing and voice what their concerns were or voice their support. So the name change, if council then decided, yes, we want to move forward with it, there's still a bit of a process, you know, thirty days before it's effective, intent is sixty days to get the signs up, though it can take longer. So, you know, as we're looking at the centennial, if that's something that council wishes to do, then, you know, there's, there's a timeline to look at. Wanted to just note, you know, cars came out in two thousand and six. I think people started to really understand that it was this national treasure, it was coming back into the light. And the World's Monuments Fund put it out in their watch list in two thousand and eight, recognizing the complex challenges of preserving this iconic cultural landscape and this unique American experience. It is something that's part of Kingman. I'm from Kingman, I've been doing this role promoting tourism for almost twenty years. Promoting Kingman is the heart of Historic Route sixty-six, I'd love to put heart into that promotion and actually call us on sixty-six. And I also wanted to show, you know, we are, we do promote Andy Devine as Kingman's favorite hometown son. And, and just pass these out so you can see what. Thanks. Thank you. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Josh, for the presentation and of course, your passion on Route sixty-six and of course, being a hometown. and of course, being a home, hometown boy, hometown guy. So, we appreciate that. Council, any questions for Josh?
Okay.
Do you want to wait until the public?
Public, you want to do that first?
Yeah.
Can you bring Josh back up?
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Okay, uh, obviously, that's why a lot of you are here tonight, and, uh, so we want to give you some time to speak. Um, Penny Holden, you've signed up again to speak. Would you like to come back up?
I'm probably gonna have the same thing to say that most of these people have. Andy Devine is what Kingman is known for. I think it's a waste of taxpayers' money. I think it's a waste of time to change the name. Leave it like that. People are educated. They can read a map, and they know Andy Devine is 66. Thank you.
Thank you, Penny. Uh, Leah Stagg?
Uh, first of all, I want to point out that I am not here representing the Mojave County Historical Society. I'm here on my own, um, and, um, I'm representing myself and, um, as a historian and as a citizen in this community. Um, I have to tell you that I am actually really encouraged by the discussion that's been going on about this, um, that people are that passionate about their history and things like that. Um, but, um, the danger with history is assuming because it happened in the past, its relevance is unchanging. Um, the, assuming tradition for tradition's sake, assuming that changing a street name would mean turning our back on history, that's not sufficient, and that's not sustainable. I propose a different perspective. Traditions are relevant and impactful when they are personal. By the same token, history is a living entity and changing with each group. Embracing Route 66 as Route 66 offers a new chapter and actively embraces that interpretation of history and heritage are different for different generations. What the change of name is proposing is far more than signs, but an opportunity for the younger generation to connect to our city's history and see themselves as playing an active role in that history. To argue otherwise is to say that they have no place in the discussion because everything that matters happened before they were born. You can't hermetically seal history or tradition. They're active concepts. People do not and cannot connect with Andy Devine as they once did. This is the reality of history and historical interpretation. Seventy years ago, when the street was dubbed Andy Devine Avenue, it was done to reflect a contemporary desire of the community. Like all things in history, though, as time passes, interpretation changes, and what was personal can quickly feel impersonal. Those of us in cultural heritage professions know we cannot force someone to care. However, we can also embrace the reality that it is our job to create some relevance for our audience so that the opportunity for a conversation is there. It is not just about naming, changing the name of a road. If that were the case, it would not be worth it. It is about acknowledging that many who have and continue to ha, make Kingman what it is today. Tourists and many locals driving on Andy Devine ask the question, "Who is he? And where's Route 66?" Driving on a road clearly named Route 66, however, they will know where they are and will ask, "Who lives here? What things should we do while we're in Kingman?" They will learn why Kingman is the heart of Route 66, and instead of wondering why Kingman doesn't call it Route 66. The story of Andy Devine is the story of one man, with Kingman as a secondary character at best. The story of Kingman's Route 66 is the story of the Devine family, as well as the Benellis, the Barthlos, may I say, the Watkins, the Stags. It is our story, whether we grew up here or moved here. We are not turning our back on history, but rather embracing more of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Next, Barbara Carpenter.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm good, I'm here for me, and I'm here for someone else, too. She couldn't be here, so Teresa Bogler asked me to read this for her. She said, "Route 66 is a national scenic highway that goes from Chicago to Santa Monica Pier. Along this route, there are only signs that indicate you are on Historic Route 66. You are on a different-named road. If our tourism department is so concerned by the name of Andy Devine or Route 66, how about they educate the public instead of getting rid of Kingman history? I did not know George Washington or Martin Luther King Jr., but I appreciate the national tributes to them and their contributions to our history by the streets and highways named after them. Why can't we leave a part of Kingman history alone in honor of our own Andy Devine, and again, just educate the public? For myself, maybe I'm just old. I'm so tired of everything changing all the time. Uh, uh, I mean, Andy Devine is Kingman's history. Now, I'm sorry, I didn't live here then, but he still means something to Kingman. Route 66 is all the way from Illinois to California. They've all got a part of it. Why can't we have both? I mean, if people don't know that it's Route 66, make Google Maps fix it. Why do we have to put it out? I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you. Um, I don't think this name change is prudent or necessary. Along the entire length of Route 66, from Chicago to Santa Monica, the ro, Mother Road has double names, just like ours. Locally, in Williams, it's also Bill Williams Avenue. In Needles, it's Broadway Street. In Santa Monica, it's Colorado Avenue, PCH, and Highway 1. Um, I follow Route 66 Facebook groups. Uh, they're very interesting to me, and one thing I know about people who travel Route 66 is they're very passionate and they're very prepared. There's apps for your phone that are a map, have all the interesting things. There's, uh, paper maps, there's books, there's all kinds of things that people can find. Uh, they can find 500 feet of derelict, broken-up asphalt that's off the road. They know where it is. They are prepared. They know where things are. They are not gonna be confused by the name Andy Devine. Um, it's a hardship on every single resident and business along that route. And the map program that I have is old. It's 13 years old. And from Ella's Place, I counted 12 miles of Andy Devine until it stopped identifying as Andy Devine. And a lot of that was, you know, part of that was past the airport. There are no businesses to speak of that there or residences, but every one of those is going to have to, uh, deal with changes for their clients, changes for the internet, for the post office is gonna be impacted. There, there is a charge. There is an impact, and I don't think it's necessary. Even people's Christmas cards lists. Um, I don't believe this, this change that is necessary, and I urge the council to reject their proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Margie.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I am here representing a Route 66 business, being the Best Western Plus Kingson. Um, so, one, I wanted to share appreciation for...
Can you speak up a little bit more, Brittany? Thank you.
Yes, sorry. Uh, I want to share appreciation for Josh Noble's presentation. He's pretty good about finding compromise to make everybody happy, to find a way to preserve the history as well as, uh, take a look at the why behind, like, what's the purpose of renaming it? And when we talk about that, it's the same reason they changed it to Andy Devine in the first place. It's marketing. So, marketing is the ultimate goal here. When we talk about, we don't have a property tax, so that sales tax is important, that bed tax is important, that restaurant and bar tax is important because that's what supports our city services. So, from a marketing standpoint, when we look at this, we see Andy Devine is what is hitting with consumers. I know we had some people that say that maybe it's unnecessary. I can tell you from my business, we are right on Route 66, and I can't tell you the number of people we have each week that ask, "How do we get to Route 66?" It truly is a thing, and when you consider the audience, so your die-hard Route 66 fans, yes, they're gonna know how to find the road. But most of the time, like, we have a huge international crowd that comes through our city. Um, and they see it, and they're like, "Oh, this is cool. We want to do this." But there's oftentimes language barriers, so it, there, there are other points to contend with. So, I do think that you should consider this proposal. I really enjoyed that Josh found a way to preserve Andy Devine and keep that as part of our history, um, and still find a way to move forward with, with the marketing issue we have here. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brittany.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Katie Barthlow. I am 24 years old. I am a lifelong Kingmanite, and I work in the tourism industry. Additionally, I am a passionate Route 66 enthusiast. Renaming Andy Devine Avenue to Route 66 is not turning our backs on our history. Rather, it is an embrace of another facet of Kingman's history. Route 66 excites me. I love Route 66, and there are millions of people across the globe who feel the exact same way. Route 66 actively drives visitors to our destination, and 100 years of Route 66 is worth celebrating. The rename would be mo, momentous for our community. But change is difficult. I completely understand that. The road has been named Andy Devine for all of my life as well, and I am not disregarding the history of the Devine family in our community. Andy Devine's localized history is and will continue to be honored with displays at the Mojave Museum, the Andy Devine Days Parade, the rodeo, the Andy Devine Awards, all Josh mentioned, et cetera. To rename the road would be a celebration, not a rejection. A celebration of an internationally and locally loved cultural icon. Again, celebrating Route 66 is not a rejection of Andy Devine. Route 66 turns 100 next year, and I care very deeply about that. It would be so impactful for Kingman to be known as the community that chose to honor the legacy of Route 66. And that legacy is a story of resilience, advocacy, perseverance, and hope among so many other things that is worth honoring and celebrating, especially at the century mark for this historic highway. Kingman is the heart of Historic Route 66. That means something to me, and I'm sure that means something to everybody in this room. I'm sure we all remember the Get Hitched on 66 event last year. The heart of Historic Route 66 is not just a shallow slogan. It is reflective of our community, and very personally, that phrase reflects the care I have in my heart for my community and for Route 66. For me, living in a Route 66 community fosters such a sense of love and pride. So, you have heard and will continue to hear many, many people's opinions about this name change, and I hope you will thoughtfully consider mine as someone who is also a lifelong Kingmanite. The prospect of this name change really excites me. I feel so enthusiastically in favor of this change because I see the value of Route 66. So, I genuinely beseech you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, to please consider the value of this name change and the positive impact it would have on Kingman. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Katie. All of you, we appreciate your passion, whether for or against this, this item. We appreciate you all being here. Council, do we want to call Josh up for any more questions or discussion? Or what are you, some, what are some of your thoughts? You want me to lead off? Why, why? Okay, go ahead. Counselor Savage. Appropriate time. All right, Mr. History here, uh, going back to the B-17s. Andy Devine was born in 1905. Um, got an email, and I'm sure most of the council got it, that he did something in his youth that was trying to use that as a negative connotation of Andy Devine as a person. I didn't appreciate that. The email also indicated a reversal on the tax revenue. Uh, Andy Devine started, um, silent movies in Hollywood in the 20s. Uh, Route 66 wasn't starting, uh, to start building until 1926. Took 12 years to complete, and the other thing is, which was brought up earlier, it's nearly 2,500 miles long. Along the compass of that Route 66, yes, you're gonna have many, many places celebrate the 100th anniversary, which is a milestone. And don't get me wrong, it was incredible feat for them to do that in 12 years. I can't even imagine how long that, something like that would take now. Um, yeah, I'm speaking the truth there. Um, but the, the thing with Andy Devine, yes, he, he, he was Kingman. He, to me, is still Kingman, having grown up here as well. Uh, was here when, uh, the 40 start to get built, uh, where the trucks had to go down Route 66 and Andy Devine. So, it's always been embedded in me. Um, he was a movie star, second rate, number two, you said, and also that we're stuck with that name. I didn't appreciate that as well. Um, but he starred along John Wayne, Roy Rogers, Gene Autry. These people have streets all over the place named by them, even on highways, even going through cities. They're still named that with the placards all over the place, which highway you're on. I personally, um, used to emcee the Oktoberfest for, probably 10 years. I have met people from all over this country, Europe, Asia, renting motorcycles to drive 66. Yes, they know it's here. It is not gonna affect it that much to change the name. I can guarantee that. The revenue that you think you're gonna get and increase, uh, you can still market heart of Route 66, but I do not foresee, up until this point, Andy Devine was the most famous person in this city. We got somebody crawling up on his back real quick with Tyler, or Ty, Tarek Schoolbell. Uh, if he gets another couple side yours, uh, youngs, we're gonna probably end up naming the street out for him, too. Um, but I, I just think it's not needed. Uh, we have shields all over the place. We have street signage all over the place. I, I, I even suggested to manager Walsh, "Paint more shields out there." I mean, there's things that we don't have to put the community under extra cost. Um, and I'm glad that was brought up. That was one of the first things I thought of. I've had problems with the post office with my own business. I couldn't imagine this. Um, but I, I, I am firmly against this. I, I appreciate what the effort you put into this, but I don't think it's needed. I, I really don't think it's needed, in my opinion. But thank you again for your presentation, Josh. Thank you, Counselor. Vice Mayor?
Sure. I'll go. Josh, in your, uh, presentation, you said that, um, international tourists, they sign the guestbook. Um, there's an increase of 8% in one of your slides. 8.1%.
Oh, oh, um, the economic, uh, spending in Kingman 2019, and then you go down with the pandemic and then coming back down.
Sure. So, can you tell me, what is the impact on international tourism as we see it today, compared year over year?
Um, international tourism is strong. I was at IPW, that's U.S. Travel's largest trade show in the United States, in Chicago in June. Um, every single appointment that I had was filled. We actually had, uh, the Arizona Office of Tourism set a separate table up for Route 66 communities to have, uh, meetings directly with the tour operators, and all of our, all of our schedules were filled. Um, there's a lot of excitement about the centennial, um, but there's still a lot of confusion. Even they ask, you know, "How is it that they find Route 66? What resources do you have so that people know that they are on it and where they can get on it and off of it?" Um, we've, we've got a map that the Route 66 Association has put together to try to explain that the best as you can. Arizona's pretty well signed compared to other states, um, but it is still a challenge, especially for international visitors.
Okay. My point is, is that we are up in international visitors, so they are finding us some way somehow. And they are coming here for Route 66. So, I, I, I find it a challenge with the signage that's up there on the monitor. Um, we, we have a pretty designated corridor, so... So, what I would like to see is, for me, it's not an either-or. For me, you know, if we want to make the Route 66 more prominent than Andy Devine, then I say, you know, let, let's figure out a way to do that. So, um, you know, the mapping, I, I do not search, and, and I'm not sure if everybody searches by address because I don't know the address to put it in there. As you showed in your example, I put the business name that I'm looking for or the type of business I'm looking for. And in doing that, and I took some screenshots, I, I did some diligent homework, thank you very much, um, for this particular topic, and I screenshotted, and it's, it clearly states on my Google mapping program, Andy Devine and Historic Route 66, all the way from downtown, all the way to out at the airport. So, it depends on how you, you know, zoom in and zoom out, but it is there. So, I can't imagine that any tourist that's gonna come to an area is not gonna use a mapping system to where they can't find Google Maps. Um, I agree that we should have more prominent signage on I-40. Um, I believe... I believe that we should definitely put something there that shows that we're going to Route 66. I believe that we should have more prominent signage along that whole corridor. So I would much rather see us, you know, if there's a way for us to create more shields so we can line that corridor. I am in favor of that versus the money that it's going to cost the city. I'm not okay with the money that's going to cost the city. I wasn't okay with Flying Fortress. I wasn't okay with, you know, we have other things that we can be spending the money on. So there's that. The staff time and effort. You laid out the protocol for if this moves forward with council and all the steps that we have to take and all the notification. And, I mean, I heard from at least 10 businesses along Andy Divine in the last three days about how they are opposed to the address change because they, the cost, the licensures that they have to change at the various levels of state. So I'm not leaning towards removing Andy Divine. I'm trying to find a way that we can keep that corridor, the Route 66 and Andy Divine. I am curious, though. Please tell me what the other two commissioners said, because it was a 4-2 vote, two not in favor. I am curious to know what those commissioners had to say in opposition.
And it's been a couple months, but my recollection is that they wanted to see that history preserved, much as the different community members have mentioned here. If I could also respond to this, so we have the Andy Divine and the Route 66 shield up. Even with that, like Brittany had said, we're always having people coming in. They cannot find Andy Divine, because this looks more like a branding opportunity. Like, you have the Kingman Arch, and it's got Route 66 shields on either side leading into Beale Street. You know that's not Route 66. This doesn't necessarily mean it's Route 66. We understand Kingman brands itself as the heart of 66. Maybe they have that 66 shield on all the signs. So better signage would definitely help.
I'm thinking about, like, independent signage of just the shields, and we have all those light poles that go up there, up Route 66. You know, we have opportunity to brand that corridor, so they would absolutely know. Like I said, it's not an either/or for me. It's a, let's find a way to make Route 66 more prominent. And so, you know, there's lots, and again, I did my homework. There's lots of streets, as the speaker did say, that have the dual naming convention. And it is not, it even says in my research that it's pretty much the norm along the Route 66, so for the dual naming convention. And then, I think that's, I think enough. I just, I'm worried about the burden on the businesses as well, and the cost, and the time that it's going to take them. You know, you talk about the ROI for this being renamed Route 66. You talk to the Edward Jones company that's up on Andy Divine, they don't care. What they care is they have to change their license at the SEC. They have to go through and change their business, their letterhead, their business cards. They have to, you know, that matters to them. So how many of those businesses that are not tourism-related are going to be affected by this? I can see why the folks wanted to do this, and again, I respect our commissions, but I just, I can't support this going any farther and spending any more staff time and energy and city dollars on moving this forward. And that's my position.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Actually, when I was elected to council six years ago, seven years ago now, you know, I thought this is one of the things I would like to see happen, that Route 66 was, that Andy Divine was changed to Route 66. Yes, I love, I watch old westerns. I love watching Andy Divine and his acting, and especially as he was a sidekick to a number of prominent actors. So I get that. My business, I own the last business addressed in the city limit of East Andy Divine. I own the business next door, and it's addressed East Highway 66. So I'm in an interesting thing. As far as remarketing and rebranding, that didn't bother me. Once again, I'm a trash company. I don't care. I mean, I want to brag about being on Route 66, because I think that's cool. I mean, there's been TV shows about Route 66. But on the same token, too, I do remember history, and I do honor history. And that's why I asked Manager Walsh to pull this up. Some of our signage, that one just has the Route 66 shield. A number of our signs actually says Historic Route 66, up by Napa, for example. Now, it seems like, for the most part, on the other side of the freeway, east of I-40 on Andy Divine, we didn't continue that theme. I think there is an opportunity that we need more signage that is saying Historic Route 66 and Andy Divine. And I propose that also because, once again, that's compromise. And I think in this situation, we have a lot of us who are passionate about it remaining Andy Divine, but equally, there's a number, and I've received emails and letters on both, they're passionate about capitalizing on Route 66, that that's good for Kingman. I totally get it. And so that's why I think we just need to get really more signage out there. Vice Mayor mentioned all the light poles. We need to put the Route 66 shield up on it. That's going to cost a little more money, though, Vice Mayor, to put that.
I'm looking for Public Works to help out with that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Plante.
So, anyway, I think we should continue with what the city has started already with downtown. There's a lot of them that say Historic Route 66. Continue that, but brand it all the way along Andy Divine, and make sure that we get the word out that it's saying that. I think that'll help. Vice Mayor also was showing me on her maps yesterday. It says both. It's just, I don't know if it's an English translation they're having difficult reading or what on maps. And of course, I did want to comment. I want that one slide that you had, that was the old phone book. How many of us remember what a phone book is with yellow pages? I mean, us old timers do. And I liked how that business advertised East Andy Divine, but said on Route 66. So, great ideas there. And then that can continue. So whether it be on their digital advertising, you know, I think that there's ways to overcome all that. But thanks, Josh. I appreciate it. Council, anybody else? Smiley?
Josh, the one thing we do need to do is right there, before we get to Andy Divine, if you're coming west, we need to take down that sign that says End Route 66. It's on the right, right in front of the Silver Queen, almost to where you turn to go on 93.
On to I-40, to get onto I-40.
Okay.
It says, but that's an ADOT sign, so that's a whole other battle. I took a picture of that today, too, Smiley.
It's, yeah, well, Scott tried to get rid of it.
And it says End of Arizona 66.
Oh, end.
And just before you get to that, there's an overhead sign that says Andy Divine, Route 66. So I, you know, the signage is confusing.
Yes, absolutely.
Once again, I think we just need, we need more signage, but pushing, I think, both is what I propose. So Counselor Salley, anything to weigh in on?
I'll put in my two cents, even though we can see what direction I think this is going. I would just say, you know, as a hometown girl, you know, this is maybe a generational thing, where I don't necessarily have an emotional attachment to Andy Divine, or would I, if I made a list of 20 things that I think are unique to Kingman, I don't know that Andy Divine would make it on my list, but that's because, growing up here, I didn't watch those old movies. You know, I went to the rodeo, the parades, I was in the parade, you know, for all kinds of activities as a kid. I knew who he was, but I just, I don't think I have that attachment because I didn't watch those movies. So maybe you might be a little ahead of your time here in asking for this, as we kind of listen to this feedback. You know, if we were to move forward, I would want to take more time with this and personally know that we reached out to every single business owner and kind of had a better feeling for whether or not there was support, and they, you know, could financially handle, you know, this new obligation they'd have to take on with changing, making the various changes to their businesses. So I would want more time. And I would say that, you know, I understand that leaning into this marketing and Route 66, I completely understand why this is a good idea, because we're really leaning into Route 66, and we changed the name of Route 66. So I see where you're coming from, why everyone is so passionate about this change. And my last thing, I wanted to ask why we removed the shields from the street. I know we repaved, we completely repaved it, but we never put those shields back, Jack. And I think those should come back, and maybe that would really help with the wayfinding as if we had them.
And before you-
Every so many feet.
Before he goes into that, if council directed us to start the application, that is where we would be reaching out to all the businesses. It doesn't change the name, then it just starts the feasibility into looking and seeing what the community would want. So it by no means changes the name.
Good evening, Mayor, my Vice Mayor, Council. I really thought we were going to make it to the end of this without that coming up, but obviously not. So when we did the repaving, we actually chose not to put those back, because often you'd see people laying in the road or groups of people in the road taking pictures.
I kind of missed that, actually.
Yeah. Yeah, never mind. Anyway, that's why we didn't put those back. We did talk about some options of, you know, getting a stencil put on the sidewalks or other areas where if they pulled off the side of the road, at least they're not laying in the road. So I wanted to give you that background on it. And to your point, we can do additional signage, maybe we work with Josh, and we have something that's more unique, because we do have the historic business loop. There's not a lot of those, but to your point, we have a number of poles that we could stand those on, and maybe there's something more unique that provides an identity, if that's right, you want to go with that. I'll go sit back down. Thank you.
Jack, I'd like to put those back on the road, if it was up to me. I thought they were nice.
Well, at least maybe for the centennial year or something.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't, because of public safety, I totally get where Jack is coming from.
I mean, people make choices.
Can we ask Carl if we have a legal issue if we do that?
No, don't ask him.
Well, they did, so. I kind of echo back with what Jack said. When you create that kind of a hazard with the known tendency of people wanting to play, dodge the cars for a photo op, I think it creates, we hadn't had a claim that I'm aware of, but I think it could create a potential claim in the future.
Is that an opportunity to create a space where we have off-the-road, a fake road with the shield that people could lay on and take their photos, and that way they wouldn't lay on the real road?
Well, we do have the shield, but I was thinking of asphalt, too. I agree.
A place where they can lay on the asphalt. There you go.
So one area that Josh and I actually had talked about, and there's two that we could look at, somebody had mentioned some obscure remnant of the original Route 66. So you have Chadwick, which was a portion of that, which doesn't have a lot of traffic. The difficulty is getting people to know that that's there and pull off in that location, but that is an opportunity. At the bottom of El Trovador on 10th Street, there's actually an old remnant before they did the big fill going up the hill. So there are some opportunities for that. I think the stuff that Josh and his team have done with the big 66 shields and the those pieces, people can see them, it's just hard to direct them to something that's on the ground, unless it is in the middle of Andy Divine. And again, you know, it's open for conversation with Carl and everybody, but it was a safety decision as well, that we opted not to put those back. But in other places, absolutely, we have a stencil. Maybe Josh and I can work together on some signage to get people to those options. Maybe if there's apps and things out there, it could be used to direct those tourists and those individuals that want to get pictures. It's still a roadway, but at least it's not a five-lane major arterial.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Okay. Any other questions or comments for Josh? Counselor Walker, you haven't weighed in on this, but I-
Well, I've had a lot of emails going both ways on it. More against it. You know, it's, both of them are history, and I can see by rebranding it, it could help, it could help with tourism, but is it going to offset it? At this point, I think I like the idea, is let's just brand it both ways the best we can and run with it.
Okay, okay. Carl, do we need to, is there any motion we need to make on this? It's council discretion. What, I think staff understands, and the public, I think you all understand what we, what the desires are. We're trying to reflect your desires, I think, anyway.
Yeah, I think it's pretty well communicated what the council's seeking or what they're looking for. And I think once we start addressing some of those, we may have to bring something back. There may be some costs involved that I'm not aware of, but, or at least an update, so.
Okay, so we will move on then. Okay. Once again, we appreciate all of you being here, because I know most of you are here for this item, so thanks again. Item 3B, City of Kingman and Wave CED Ground Lease. City staff negotiated a ground lease with Wave CED. This is for the property located at the northeast corner of Andy Divine and Fairgrounds. The portion of the lot in question is suitable for the construction of an office building for shared co-work space with Wave CED, the city and Mojave Community College's Small Business Development Center. This ground lease is the first step to achieve this goal. This will be a 40-year ground lease. The next step will be Wave designing and building the shared co-work space and a lease back for a portion of that space to the city economic development purposes. Staff recommends approval.
And I think that's B.
Okay, Carl?
So I think the description pretty much covered what we're looking at. If you all recall, we had the presentation from Economic Development and Wave about this project and the idea of how to move forward with it. This was the first step. The city is, has the ground for the building. With this, the idea again is to lease that ground space, basically that empty lot next to Lewis Kingman Park, Fairgrounds, and Andy Divine, about 2.75 acres or so. So this lease would be for, it says 40 years. That's what the Wave is looking at, looking at to get the return on their investment of building this building and the financing ability that they're going to need to be able to secure with that longer term. With a 40-year lease, currently it's set for a dollar a year. This is something that's not a gift clause violation when you're looking at, because I always scream gift clause violation whenever we give things away. When we're working with these different governmental entities, you can definitely work through these problems. The longer, the long-term or short-term with this is, we still need to negotiate the lease back portion. That's going to come, we already have a draft that we can work on. It'll be kind of a bare, right now it's bare bones. I think, you know, until the building itself is designed, we get a better idea of what it's going to look like, then we can finalize that lease back option. In the event that no lease back option takes place, and we're giving ourselves about three years to get to that point, then at that point, the $1 a month would, or $1 a year would change to a market rate. So there's an incentive for us to get to some kind of an agreement to develop this lease back option. Trying to think if there's anything else, really, it's a very standard, boring ground lease. I think the more exciting information will be when we get to the lease back option. But if you have any questions on that, I'm willing to-
Okay, thank you, Carl. Any questions for Carl on this matter?
I did have a couple questions.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
So when we enter into this ground lease, does this encumber the entire parcel?
No, that's-
So is it going to be separate?
Yeah, it's already-
Because my concern is, I don't want to tie up the whole parcel. Should the city decide to do something with the remainder outside of the 2.7 acres?
We have, I have to look which item it is. Yeah, the total size of that parcel is 5.57, so this would be roughly half of it. I know we have an image in the-
I saw the image. I just want to make sure that we're only encumbering-
This portion that is directly affected, correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other questions?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, Counselor Savage.
Is it subdivided into two parcels, or is it-
No, we're measuring out that half.
Okay, all right.
So there's a legal description that describes it. If it's subdivided, I'm not 100% on that, but.
It's not subdivided. The legal description is basically the southwesterly half of the parcel.
Okay. Okay. Seeing no other questions, I'll make a motion that we approve Item 3B, City of Kingman and Wave CED Ground Lease.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number four, Public Hearings. For a public hearing, Resolution Number 5571, authorizing a convenience fee model to be established for all debit and credit card transactions. The city has been accepting credit and debit card payments for goods and services for many years. When a credit or debit card payment is accepted, the city has charged a processing fee- When a credit or debit card payment is accepted, the city has charged a processing fee by the card processor. This costs the city over $500,000 annually. Card processing companies offer convenience fee models for processing transactions, which would allow the city to charge its customers directly for the processing cost. Staff recommends council approve Resolution Number 5571, adopting a convenience fee model for all credit and debit card transactions. Welcome, Tina.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Vice Mayor, and good evening, council members. So at the May 20th council meeting, the city council adopted a notice of intent to consider establishing or implementing a convenience fee model. Part of this process of going through, going through this process is to also hold a public meeting, so we are at this process now. The presentation before you this evening is very similar to the one that was shared in May, so I will somewhat quickly go through it and take a little bit more time on maybe the additional information that is in that, and then obviously allow the public to comment, provide some input, and I will do my best to try to answer any questions that you as a council have, as well as what the public brings to the table. So do we allow card payments for our services and programs? Absolutely, we do. It's a very convenient way for our customers to pay, and we allow it for, I want to say, every single service or program that we offer, ranging from bus passes to the powerhouse, and the list goes on and on and on, in every way, in every service that we do provide. There is a cost to that, though. So processing a credit card or a debit card is not free, and for many, many years, the City of Kingman has absorbed that fee and currently does today. The total cost to process those cards, we expect in fiscal year '25 to reach about $500,000. As card payments become more and more popular, obviously so do those costs, and so we do expect it to reach about $500,000. Most of those fees are incurred by our utility billing department, and you'll notice that the water operating fund, so our water rates are directly tied to the utility billing department, and $330,000 or so will be incurred in that operating budget. Some of the statistics surrounding our card processing, we, our total transactions in dollar amounts are over $9 million, and we collect over 300,000 transactions in credit card payments. Average transaction cost is about 3%. Average transaction size is about $27. So card processors offer two different models whenever we're talking about the fees associated with it. It's the existing model that we have today, which is where the city or the vendor, City of Kingman, absorbs the fees, or where you can pass that fee on, and that is called a convenience fee model. So the customers are charged for that transaction fee. Now, there is not a standard industry-wide fee associated with it. Every card processor and each of the cards themselves, so Visa, MasterCard, American Express, also have their own fees. So it depends on the card processor. The difference with the convenience fee model also is that the transaction fee itself is displayed separately, whether that be on the receipt, whether that be on the card swiper, whether that be online as you're getting ready to submit checkout or submit, you will see what that fee actually is. Gives you the opportunity as a customer to be able to pay in a different method if you don't want to incur that fee. So what are the fees? Well, over the past few months, the City of Kingman has reached out to its card processors, which we have about eight card processors, and tried to get what the fees would be for those customers, because it is different when the city absorbs it versus when you're passing it on. Depending on the card processor, those fees would range anywhere from 2.95% to 3.5%. Some of the card processors do have a minimum transaction amount of $2 per transaction, and that, again, depends on the card processor. Now, the $2 minimum, and again, this is for a couple of our card processors, would require a customer to spend about $67 to get to that $2 minimum. So anything under $67 for that card processor would be charged the $2 minimum. So wanting to give you some sample customer impacts based on some different purchases which utilize different card processors. So if we were to go to the golf course and purchase a round of golf and buy a bucket of balls for the driving range, that cost is $52. That card processor is going to charge the customer 3.3%, so they would pay $1.72 for that transaction. Now, if I were to pay my utility bill at the counter, that is also a different card processor, and I'm going to be charged 3.5%. So for a $75 bill, you'll see what that cost is. If I choose to pay it online or via the IVR, that also is a different card processor, and that is a lower fee at 2.95%. If I decide that I want to go to the powerhouse and buy a Route 66 mug for, perfect timing, actually, the Route 66 mug for a friend, it's $18, but that particular card processor requires that $2 minimum, so I will end up having to pay $2 because the cost of that mug is not $67. So you'll see what the cost of that is. And then for building permits, that card processor is also different, and they, the building permit department will be charged 3% once we go to the online portal. So that gives you an idea of the different impacts that our customers will, how our customers will be impacted. So we've talked about over the last few meetings whether or not our customers have other ways to pay so that they don't have to incur this cost. And yes, of course, there's always check and cash, and you can do that at any counter, and every single one of our services and programs, whether it's offered online or not, you can also go to any of the counters and pay in cash or check. We also have a couple of electronic methods that we offer for our utility billing customers currently, and potentially when we launch the online portal for our permitting and licensing. But currently, our utility billing customers have the option to pay bank draft or bill pay electronically. Now, we do incur a fee for that, but it is a smaller fee than what our credit and debit card customers incur. So staff is recommending that we continue to absorb those fees to give customers another opportunity. It's about $40,000 to $50,000 a year is what would be absorbed by the ratepayers, different than the $332,000 for credit and debit cards. And we don't know if we're going to see a big transition to this type of payment method, so staff would request that, let's evaluate what happens, see if we begin to see a big influx into those types of methods, and if we end up incurring even more costs for those methods, too, and then just come back to council and report, and then let council make the decision on what they want to do with those particular electronic fees. We always want to compare ourselves to what our neighbors are doing as well, and so Mojave County currently does pass that fee on to their customers. Bullhead City and Lake Havasu do not, but another Kingman company that provides utilities does pass that fee on as well, and that is Unisource. So our customers are used to, right now, doing business with the county, they're paying this fee, and when they are paying for their electric services or their natural gas services, they are also paying that fee, when they pay it with a credit card or debit card. So the next steps in this process would be to hold the public hearing this evening, and then discuss, for the council to discuss and consider the convenience fee model option. If the convenience fee model is approved, staff would work to get that into place by October 1st. The card processors need about 45 days to get that into place. We do have a couple of current card processors that are not going to offer the convenience fee model, whether that be that the particular services that utilize that card processor don't mean the minimum revenue generation for those, for those processors, or they don't have the ability to show what the convenience fee model is, whatever that might be. There are a couple of services that we have to find a different card processor for, which we have identified, but those agreements won't be brought back to council until September, depending on what the outcome of this is. And we would need another 15 days or so to get that into place, so a couple of our services would not, we would not, we would not implement the convenience fee model until maybe mid-October, and that's parks and recs, parks and rec programs and services, and that is also our utility billing IVR system. So with that, I, oh, I also want to point out, as far as notice, this is a big change for our customers, and instead of just waiting until October 1st to share what this, how this might affect them, we do plan on posting notices at all of our customer counters, similarly to what we did when we were increasing our fees and our rates, so that as customers approach the counters or they go on to the online platforms, they will know ahead of time that October 1st or October 15th, the convenience fee model will be going into place. So I think that's important that we share that message with our customers as well. And if there are any questions from the council, then I would ask that you open the public hearing, Mayor.
Thank you, Tina, I appreciate it. Questions for Tina, Counselor?
Hello, Ms. Mulley. Question, you said we have four different processing companies we use now?
We have about eight different-
Eight? Why?
So depending on our platforms, right, depends on who we can use. So we always want to try to integrate our card processors with our platforms. It makes it much easier to process transactions, and some of those platforms require a specific card processor. And sometimes those card processors don't necessarily work with just, yeah, with just counterpayment, so that's the reason why.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Savage.
Vice Mayor?
I have a follow-up to that. So with our integration of our smart gov that's going into effect, will that eliminate some duplication of some processors?
Thank you for the question, Vice Mayor. Absolutely not. It's actually going to bring on a new card processor. You just approved that in the consent agenda this evening, so no.
Of course, of course. Well, that wasn't the news I was looking for, Ms. Mulley. With that, though, I want to go back to payment methods without a convenience fee, where you did mention bank draft and bill pay. So bank draft would be like an ACH or an automatic recurring payment? That would be a fee, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and that's, so, and then bill pay, what do you consider bill pay?
I consider bill pay where, me as the customer, I'm sitting at my computer, I log into my Wells Fargo account, and I ask my bank to remit the payment for whatever the service is to our utility billing, to our utility billing department. We, as a city, actually incur a fee for that electronic transaction.
Even though it's a paper check that's being mailed?
It's actually not. It ends up being an electronic file that comes through.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
That's why I wanted clarification. Thank you.
Okay. That fee must be very minimal right now, I know, because you haven't, you didn't mention it, you said it was very small at this point in time.
Yeah, so, thank you, Mayor. So for the bank draft, the recurring bank draft, goodness, it is, it is, it is very minimal. I don't know the amount off the top of my head. If it is a one-time bank draft, so like an e-check, I want to say they're anywhere from $1.50 to $1.95 per transaction.
Wow, okay. But we will examine that at a later date.
That is correct.
Thank you, Tina. Any other questions for Tina? Okay, we will, since this is an item that needs to be a public hearing, we will open this public hearing on Resolution Number 5571. We have two citizens that would like to, like to share their comments on this, Terry Alumbah or Alvin Bah? Is Terry here? Okay. Well, okay, so then, Mike, is it Lipstein?
Thanks, Lip.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks for letting me be here. This is very instructive, and I admire your work, but I hear all the time, and I've been in Kingman for many, many years, that I never hear whether there are competitive bids for the services that you have. We just learn that you have $500,000 or $600,000, but is it statutory that you're required to have more than one bid on what you pay for? Is it in the regs? Well, of course, I could look it up, find out, but I think the public should know whether you've arrived on these big, big fees that we pay after due diligence of getting different estimates from different people, and also making sure there's no sweetheart deals. Has anybody been involved in those two issues?
Well, I can answer that a little bit, Mike. I think Tina, our finance manager, brought that up. Certain computer programs require that you use a certain processor. For example, my business with QuickBooks, they, you have to use a certain processor to process those credit cards. The city faces that same issue, and because we have multiple programs, each of those program, you know, computer programs, billing programs, do different things, but they require a processor specific to that program. And so there's really no way to put that out to bid as a public entity.
So you can't, and the water department or utilities cannot shop around for different processors?
Not because of the program, we use the billing program. Tina, correct? That is what I'm saying? So because of that program that we're using, that's whether it be, I don't know, you know, there's, there's multiple different programs out there for, that are utility programs.
Okay, now, this is out of order, but maybe you'll allow me to ask. You talk about an irrigation system and golf course. Do we know whether there were competitive bids for that? Or the architectural firm?
Yes.
You go through different architectures?
That's off the topic.
That's off the topic. But yes, almost, but once again, well, just a quick question, though, Carl, I know. Our departments, our departments are pretty good about competitive bidding when it goes out for certain services that are offered. I mean, you know, for, for example, for pavement, for the water department, this, this, that we were talking about earlier in the meeting about the architecture firm, we haven't set on an architecture firm, that'll be put out for, to bid. So, you know, we try to, everything we can, to put it out for bid.
Okay, thank you very much. I apologize. I'm an attorney as well, so you'll be receiving papers from me in the morning.
Thanks, Mike, appreciate the comments. Since this is a public hearing, are there any other, is there anybody else that would like to speak? Brittany, come on up, please.
City Council, Vice Mayor, Mayor, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak at the hearing. I just wanted to caution, and I appreciate that you are providing a no-cost method with the electronic billing or bank draft. So I obviously, I work for a company that is not local, they're based out of St. George, so providing cash is a no-go. Providing a check means it has to be billed, so consider that as it may slow funds coming into the city as people have to adjust to that, so we're not allowed to do business with anybody that pays a convenience fee. So that's something that's in our written, you know, rules for, for us as managers is if it incurs a convenience fee, like, so I love to pay things with my credit card pay bill right then. Bam, done. But when they have convenience fees, then we have to, we have to submit it for billing, and then it has to go to them, it takes a week to process, and takes, you know, four, five days to come back here, so that could be a potential impact for you. So I just thought I'd bring that point up. Thanks.
Thank you, Brittany. You bring up an interesting point. Tina, you heard. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, we will close this public hearing. Counsel, any other comments or questions on this matter? Okay, seeing none. Can we have a motion then approving for a public hearing, I mean, the Resolution Number 5571, authorizing a convenience fee model to be established for all debit and credit card transactions?
So moved.
We have motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item number five, announcements by Mayor, council members, and city manager. Manager Walsh.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mike mentioned earlier, Mike Miersman, we do have a golf professional that will be starting on Monday. We will be holding a meet and greet for him on Thursday, the 14th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the clubhouse. So we'd invite anybody and everybody to come on out and meet him. Really excited to bring him on, a lot of experience, and I think he'll, he'll really help us out at the golf course there, so thank you.
Thank you, Manager Walsh. Counselor Walker? Counselor Savage?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Ward? Counselor Salee? Okay, Vice Mayor?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Actually, the only thing I do want to bring up is a reminder that there will be no city council meeting, meeting on August 19th, because council will be attending the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Annual Conference down in Phoenix. So we are deleting that, that city council meeting. Item number six. I've talked too much already, is that what it is? Item number six, council requests for future reports and updates. Anything? Okay. There's no executive session tonight? We are adjourned. And once again, thank you, staff and everybody, for being here tonight.